Thank you. That's always a good attention getter. All right, good morning, everyone. It's 10:00 a.m. on November 24th, 2025. We are here with the Board of County Commissioners and the Fair Board for our special meeting, for an update. So with that, I'll turn it over to the fair for the fair update information that you'd like to present. I didn't receive.
It's already on.
Thank you. I didn't have anything in the folder.
Sorry, any copies?
It wasn't in the email.
Check the other folder.
There isn't anything in the folder.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see. Sometimes I miss things, so I'll check.
But as a matter of how this works in the future, I don't know that I'm supposed to send that to you. I'm supposed to publish it.
Correct.
So Stacy McBear, Board Treasurer. So I will make sure next time that it is sent to you directly.
Thank you.
Do you want to wait until you have it in front of you, or do you want to go through?
Yes, please, if we pause for just a minute, be hopeful. Otherwise, I'll be asking questions because I'm behind.
No problem.
And so what I would say in the future is when this meeting gets scheduled, which is after, you know, before, that once we schedule it, that all you have to do is send a copy to, and it's not on, it's however your system works, so I'm not saying you, but somebody sends it to the county and then we'll attach it electronically to the meeting itself. That way, the public also has a copy of that document, even though it gets published, because that's what the meeting is kind of to go over, in part, is that particular information. I have, while we're waiting for the copy, when you guys are looking at the budget, do you guys have an opportunity to see kind of a little bit more detail, not just the requirement of the P and L, but kind of a little bit more detail of what are the costs so that you can provide that information? Because just saying how much something brought in doesn't necessarily kind of reflect, this is what it costs us. Well, I'll pick a concert, for example. This is what we spent on the concert. This is kind of the way in which the concert went. This was the profit of the concert. This is how we're going to make those decisions. Because in part, for my, my line of questioning is going to go a lot deeper than what that published document looks like, because I want to get an understanding of how you guys are deciding what to do. Because in part, if you recall at the beginning of budget, we identified that it looks like the, the fair runs at a deficit every year. It's always behind. And so part of the reason to have this discussion is kind of to open up of how are we picking where to put the money to attract the events that will actually increase the profit aspect of the fair? Because we're missing that. And with this, it's just telling me a very high-level, non-detailed version of it. And so I'm hoping that we can get kind of a meeting of the minds of what we're trying to do collectively between the two boards, which is to make a self-sustaining fair. We're not making progress on the fair. And I know that there are areas where there are more losses than there are profits, but this is very high level of a view of that. And I, I, I'm going to drill down a little bit more just from knowing what this looks like, but that's what I kind of would like to see our next go-round, because we should have a coming together that says, okay, if I'm looking in the bucket of concerts, we didn't really make money. We spent more money than we made. So what did we do to identify who to attract to our area? How did we promote those events? What can the county do? Because sometimes there's an opportunity of, at our Tuesday meetings, why is the county not saying, by the way, the fair is holding this event? And then we're giving free advertisement to the people. A collaborative approach that helps increase that profit line, as each of us have different areas we work on in the county. I do a lot of stuff in the county, and people will bring me, hey, make sure you say, I'm gonna, like, Santa Claus brought me out, I'm gonna be at Home Depot. So I said Santa Claus is at Home Depot. We could work together if we knew those things. And we don't know those things. And I'm, I would like that to change from the fair, because it's, we're still at a loss.
So if you have the P and L in front of you, I'm gonna break it down by our streams of revenue. So campground sponsorships, 4H, non-fair events, events and venue rentals, fair week itself, and rodeo and royalty. Okay? So the campground has a revenue between campground rental, fair camping, and horse camping, horse show camping for $141,324.73. The expenses include camping expenses, the campground host, campground cleaning, repairs and maintenance, and sales tax paid, for a total expense of $23,614.90. And then net on that is $132,694.48. Fair sponsorships and donations revenue for this is including presenting sponsors, barn sponsors, the Faraday event sponsorship. So if it was a daytime event, like the beard and mustache contest, or the ice cream eating contest, the sponsorship auction that we held, and the Christmas fair sponsorship, we had a total of donations and sponsorships to be $1,226, $1,026, $191,000, with expenses being $15,569.35. So that's the cost of our sponsored dinner and sponsorship expenses.
Can I ask you to pause, please? I'm having a really hard time following you.
Yep, because that P and L is laid out incredibly bad.
That way?
So the chart of accounts on that, it is, I have spent two weeks trying to put it together to read it. Now, something I learned from QuickBooks Online that I didn't know before, but Jennifer pointed this out, is that that P and L could have been laid out by what's called category. So we could have, each, each one of those entries, we could have said, oh, this is campground. And so we could have looked at it that way. Unfortunately, previously, that is not, half the year is not categorized that way. Okay? It's not, it's an additional step in the process.
So it's not, it hasn't been entered that way historically?
Right. So we can't, we can only spit out about half of the year by category.
Okay.
Which is, that's concerning, because of what you were paying for in services, but also with what that allows you to do. It should allow me to pull more reports than I can. And it would actually ease some of the stress and strain on the board members, because it would just be a report that you pulled to answer some of the questions that I accept that I'm going to ask, that I'm going to get told I don't know the answer to.
Absolutely agree.
And I will add that for board members, this actual software is actually, one of the nice things about it is they actually offer free education and training, or nominal costs, to actually fully understand how to utilize the software and to extract those reports, so that you yourselves understand that. So that when you're communicating with your new bookkeeper, that you're in a way speaking the same language, and you know how to ask the right questions. That is something I think you guys should consider with this software, because this is not, as you said, a very good way of explaining what this is. And it doesn't really, the end of the answer isn't going to be detailed. And I have a concern that it's not even accurate, with respect to what has been entry deleted. QuickBooks, yeah. I actually will tell you that Groupon runs a coupon where it only costs, look, you say what you want.
I'm laughing, because it's, it's, it's a good thing.
I like to save money, and it is only, I don't care, you'll get a certificate, and you can say, you know what, I have it already printed out. I will forward you the Quicken Books, because when we shifted to that, I did that training, to see what I should be asking for to speak that same language. But the coupon really, it makes it worth it to do. And it's actually an instructor that takes you through online. This is how you ask for these reports. And it will help save your bookkeeper time, because then when you guys are communicating, it's in the same language. I'm pretty sure around Christmas time, it'll be less than what I paid for, but it's, it's worth looking at.
Joyous supports the laughter.
So would it be fair to say what we have in front of us is what you guys have taken in? I don't see any negative numbers glancing at this.
It's, yeah, you have to start. So if I'm understanding correctly, to help better understand the true P and L, you've built your own spreadsheet, which is what you're describing to us, which is why it's hard for us to track, because the format we have
does not.
is not easy to see that comparison, because, you know, on this, like halfway down, toward the bottom of page three, expenses begin. But to your point, the category of expenses do not 100% align with the category of income. Therefore, it's hard to understand how they relate.
Correct. So P and L is revenue minus the cost of goods sold, minus expenses for your nut. Okay? But we're seven pages into this now. And without attempting to extract the information into our categories, to see what is profitable, what is not, how do we adjust? How do we shift?
Right.
At this point, for the previous year's information, is what I gotta do. But this is what has been done previously to publish as well.
Yeah. So you're, you're forced to make some assumptions based on the historic way the data's been entered into the system.
I wouldn't call them assumptions, but you better be checking yourself to make sure that the numbers from that P and L is what got over into your spreadsheet.
Yeah, how do you know which numbers, how to subdivide expenses against, say, a revenue source for a particular event?
I don't have that. That is a very good question, because our square fees, which one of those square fees, how much of those fees were for rodeo tickets? How much were for demo derby tickets? At this point, I don't have that information from QuickBooks. It's another step in my process.
It's not just from QuickBooks. It's the way in which bookkeeping was being done by the fair. It is not just, it's, and it's important, because it's, this has been a point of contention for me with the fair, of what the fair was paying for service, and now what you see your product is, is the system was not being utilized so that you can have that information at this time.
Correct.
So if I could make one more clarification before we proceed. So on the third page of what we have, about three-quarters of the way down, is, says expenses. From that point on, is nothing but expenses.
Correct.
Please continue when you're ready.
So I'm gonna shift just a little bit to say, by event, by category, what our nets look like that. Because I'm going to give you a picture of where we need to shift, what we can change, and how we need to move forward. Okay? So campground netted us $132,000. Fair sponsorships netted us $110,000. Okay? We have non-fair 4H. Let me explain that one. It did not happen during the fair week. Okay, horse camp, horse show. Netted $3,000. Okay? Events and venue rentals. So our Christmas craft fair that we just had, when we have arena cross, or lost in the 50s, and we host those venues. Okay? That sport, that netted us $147,000. Okay? Rodeo. I split out rodeo and royalty, simply because the rodeo committee is going to pause royalty for a year and revamp their program. Okay? So rodeo netted $19,000. Royalty netted $6,000, almost $7,000. Okay? So these things are, in, as, as far as I can tell, in and of themselves, they're profitable. Where we get lost is the cost of individual events. Since you'd noted the concert in the dirt, we lost $17,000 on that. Okay? We made up for it with other events during rodeo, during fair. Okay? Fair week itself makes a total revenue of $150,000, but we have fair expenses of $234,000. So we lose almost $94,000. Fair week itself is a loss. Okay?
I only want to change one word. We don't make up for losing money. It's money that we just.
Yes. We offset.
We could say offset, but we did not make up losing money.
And then fairground expenses. This bucket, when I was going through this data, is an attempt to go, okay, you can't have any of this unless that fairgrounds actually runs. Keep in mind, there is no staff payroll information in here. This is simply our expenses. Okay? So fair, fairboard expenses, from what I can see, total $577,849. And that is travel, square fees, because at this point, I cannot deduce how to, I don't know how, whose belongs to what. Okay? So we have to absorb that cost. Utilities are $53,715. Okay? So then vehicle stipends, which we have put a plause on, vehicle, fairgrounds, vehicle expenses, employee clothing and supplies, fuel. Those are, I mean, I can keep going if you want me to. Improvement project, repairs and maintenance. Those are the things that it costs us to exist. We can't host events. We can't host the fair. These are the things we need to look at.
Part of your general operating overhead.
Correct.
That's what is stated as general operating, because when I see some of the lists, and I, for example, I've had this question on clothing allowance. Is that, what is, there's not a uniform for the fair. So why is that an expense that the fair is passing on to the taxpayer for that aspect of it?
I cannot answer that question for you.
And it's not, and I've heard people give the comment of, well, they work outside, but there's a lot of departments that work outside that don't get a clothing allowance. When you're looking at a budget where you have losses, that's, that's one where it's, and it, and this came also up with travel. When we are identifying who was going to travel where, are we looking at, can we afford to do things versus just voting to do things as the fair? And that's, on some of the things where we're saying losses, it's like you didn't actually budget for some of these events at the beginning of your budget year. We just voted to do them, and then we say it's a loss. And that's not how we're supposed to do a budget. My, we spent quite a bit, and on some of these lines, it's, it's not accurate. Like Swine Barn says, you only spent a smaller mark, but you actually did, because you paid for, before the board said no to moving forward the whole project, you paid for engineering to do an engineering review of that. But that's not actually reflected in that line. That says $43.32.
And I believe if you drilled down, you would see it in the improvement projects category. And you're absolutely right. And I cannot tell you, I can, I can give you the printout of what's in that account, what, what hit that account. I can't tell you what it goes to. I'd have to sit through every one of them and sort it. Okay? But that is something that has been identified by the board is a problem. Okay? And the majority of the board is looking to move forward past this and have better accounting. And better accounting that is, it's got some checks and balances built in.
So for the record, which I think it's worth us saying, is that since the Board of Commissioners last saw the fair board, there has been a change from the bookkeeper that was being paid the $5,000 a month is no longer there.
Correct.
We've switched to a new bookkeeper at a substantially decreased cost. And although you're a board member, you're taking on the role as an unpaid treasurer. So between the two of you, you're trying to make sense of what has happened. I want to make sure we say that's, because it, there's a, this is a shift from what we had before.
Yes.
I have questions about the bookkeeper costs, and the letter that was received about, from the bookkeeper. And I'd actually like the chair to answer those who are talking about bookkeeping. So did we, do you have knowledge that she deleted the entries at the end?
I don't have that knowledge.
Okay, so let's, does someone on your board have knowledge about the deletion of it? So current bookkeeper, do you have knowledge? Sorry, I should just say Jennifer.
Yes, I.
Can you explain what happened?
Yes, upon.
And can you explain it to the board as if, I've heard the issue. Can we explain it fully?
We've been asked to, everybody introduce themselves when they, so that people online know who's talking.
Jennifer Wyman, current bookkeeper for the fair board. I started reviewing books towards the end of October, and running some preliminary reports, profit and losses and balance sheets, identified some areas that were incorrect, or did not look right, negative on our accounts payable, large amounts on our accounts receivable, and just started drilling into things from those high-level reports. Upon review, I have been in contact with the current treasurer and exposing some of the findings that I've had. It's taken a while to get my contract approved. I actually was supposed to start November 1st. I did not get a contract signed until November 14th. So I've barely been able to begun, like, actual work on this, but there are a lot of recommendations that I have brought forth through the board. My later findings, just before the last board meeting, was the deletion of activity in QuickBooks. There was an attempt to remove old closed bank accounts off of the records, and in that process, outstanding checks that were not cleared were voided. What that does is that removes that expense for whatever that period is from that period. These are items that were dated all the way back to 2023. Majority of them were in 2024. You guys have an odd calendar year or fiscal year, so I recognize that it basically affected the prior two fiscal years of data. They were largely accounted for premium payouts that were voided, checks that never got cleared by kids that were in the $14, you know, range, something very small. However, it still changed your prior data. There were also bill payment checks that were never cash, whether the vendor or the recipient received the check. That's what you have to then investigate and go through your ledger and make sure that that check didn't get incorrectly cleared. Maybe there was a check for $14 to one person that got cleared, and it really was the vendor payment for $14, or something like that. Upon reconciling the bank account, I also came across that every check number is incorrect. So when we were doing our records, we were not keeping accurate check numbers in the register. And I attempted to change and correct all of the checks for the current reconciliation period I was handling, and got an error every time saying that this check number has already been used, has already been cleared in a previous month. So I started looking backwards and identified that that was true. So my concern with that is that even though we have an outstanding ledger of checks that were open, I cannot guarantee that that was the check that did not clear, because check numbers were wrong. Were we verifying the name on the checks? Were we verifying the amount of the checks when we are clearing transactions? I don't know that without having, going backwards. But I did present this to the board at the last board meeting, that I had discovered this, and I asked them if they would like me to proceed with correcting this data, or how we're going to proceed. And I've gotten the permission to meet with the current fair manager, the current treasurer, and for us to come up with a amount of time that I think it would take, which is a little hard for me, because I don't know, as I keep going, what else I'm finding that then leads to another correction.
How does that impact the current data that we have?
That data that you have, the corrections or the removal of data happened on October 31st. This report was not run until November 3rd. So for this fiscal year, you're safe. The information is good. However, it affects anything that was published on the website for prior months in this fiscal year. So even, every month, it looked like they were approving their financials and posting them online. So I've run backwards, and like August, for example, is not the same as what you run it right now. Even though the data was technically corrected, adjusted, amended at the end of the fiscal year, that's okay, except that it now has changed published information.
Do you recall that meeting, Tim?
Which meeting?
The one where she said she explained that issue? Because one of my, my follow-up question is.
The one where, where Jennifer explained the issues? That, yeah, it was just the last, the last meeting, Jennifer? Yeah. And we definitely want to move forward with that, that, that she's, the reason that she needs to find out about ours is because it's going to cost extra. And so we want to know how much we're spending. And that's why.
What's your current contract for her? The current contract that was signed?
Mm-hmm, right.
What's the dollar amount that you're paying for her service?
I'll let her answer.
$1,200 a month.
$1,200 a month? Okay. When will you have, so when were you guys going to meet again to address, so you're wanting her to tell you how much it will cost. She's telling you that there's a bit of an unknown associated with not knowing how deep the problem is.
Yeah, that's, we just need, we just need to have some idea how much, how much time it's going to take her to do it. We know that she can't nail it down definitely, but.
So what are you looking?
But we have, we, we have no idea. I have, I have nothing to compare it to, to, to guess myself. So we're basically asking for some kind of.
You paid your prior person $5,000 a month. She's charging you $1,200, saying, I'm seeing problems that we need to reconcile. How do you want her to present it to you? Do you want her to tell you how many hours she'll work on it, and then just tell you, will you approve 10 hours to this week? How are you wanting her to do it?
Well, I think, I think what we did was, was have her, as she stated, going with her and Mark, the fair manager, and Jessica, and kind of looking at it and ballparking it.
By the hour? Is that what you're, because I've been, there's a miss, I'm asking because there's a misunderstanding on how do we move forward and get the work done? Because she doesn't have, she contacted with a, and she said it just now, of how do I tell you how much it's going to cost, because I don't know the depth of the problem?
So you're trying to define the scope of work, but until you continue to uncover it, you don't know how deep it goes, essentially?
Exactly. And I'm, I'm imagining, I'm imagining she'll come back with, with updates and everything on it for us, so that we know where we're at, we know how much cost, it's costing us, and we know what the situation is. At this point, I haven't.
Your contract is flat rate right now, correct?
Yeah, correct.
So are you entertaining an hourly rate associated with fixing this?
That's what she was asked for, yes.
Is that what you're going to bring forward?
It wasn't specifically stated that way. They asked if I wanted to do hourly or flat rate, and I basically said I would have to think about this, because I didn't know if I quoted something, am I going to be held to it? That's where I'm at. I had expected that the board would identify these problems and approve for me to go and correct them. and approve for me to go and correct them. And we would discuss, you know, how the compensation would look. But I do feel like I was a little put off in the fact that I was told to go and discuss it, come back to the next meeting, which is not until December eighth. So in this entire span, I'm not able to fix anything or make any, you know, corrections. I have to wait and get approval to even begin the work to do that. So that's where it's hard for me as a bookkeeper because it's obviously a well-known, like, I know it's a problem and it needs fixed as soon as possible. And I'm kind of just stuck in the rut here figuring out like how to present it to the board so that they will approve me going forward. But I have discussed the idea of, yes, saying approve me up to this dollar amount, this many hours, and then I would bring it back to you, tell you where I'm at. But again, the way we move is every two weeks, every three weeks, a meeting. And so there's that much time that has to lag between getting another approval to do the work.
So I, I do think there's a, and I'm going to make a comment and then I know Glenn has his hand up as a member of the board to speak. This is one of those hard catch-twenty-twos. So you can't define a scope of work that's unknown. So I do think, and it's, it's hard to be efficient, but my recommendation would be if you can agree on an hourly rate, the board can agree on an hourly rate for the consulting service. And then you guys can agree, approve not to exceed dollar amount. Get as far into that investigation as possible. Then you can do it in steps with not to exceed dollar amounts on a known hourly rate as you uncover and determine how much correction is required, right? We can reduce the scope of work, define it over time. But I, I do think the only way to get started is to say, we agree on this hourly rate, this scope of work, and then here is a not to exceed dollar amount so that we can get some level of definition. And then from there, continue to refine that.
It's, it's Tim Mayhann. We can also call special meetings whenever we need to to handle something that needs to be taken care of right away.
Sounds like I would recommend your board enter into that type of an agreement as quickly as possible so we can start to seek resolution to something that we know is an issue that's been acknowledged. Mr. Bowman? Bowen, sorry.
Sorry.
Uh, it's all good. I, at the last meeting, I have to say, as a board member, I was frustrated in the fact that we are being told that our financials are deficient, defective, wrong. And we kind of kicked the can down the road. We're saving now thirty-eight hundred dollars a month over our prior bookkeeper. As a former business owner, if my financials were wrong, not that I want to say it wouldn't, it wouldn't be any dollar amount, but basically I would spend whatever it would take to get this corrected. And the fact that we're saving right now, the month of November, thirty-eight hundred dollars over our prior, I think we have a pretty good cushion to be able to say, Jennifer, please go fix our books. And I can't imagine that it would come anywhere close to thirty-eight hundred dollars that we just saved by the change. So I have to say, I don't understand the resistance to, and the delay in getting our books fixed. So that's kind of all I wanted to say.
My only thing is, is, and this is just me being a stickler when you're talking about money. You didn't have the thirty-eight hundred to spend when you were spending it. So it doesn't mean it's extra. But, and so that's not to say that I, I agree with everything else you said, but that's the problem with, we have to look at the budget correctly. Because you guys were spending five thousand dollars for someone else and now it's less, it doesn't mean you're, it just means you're wasting, wasting less money. It doesn't mean you have more money to spend. And I think it's absolutely correct for you guys to enter into a special meeting and vote so that she can get started on this. But I equally want us to use the right language about budgets because this is a budget that operates on a deficit. You guys don't have the money to operate it, which is why every decision you guys make is critical for this budget. So you are, I struggled with the same answer. If you guys were easy giving five thousand away and now we need to correct the problems that happened during that time and there, there's not a sense of urgency in the same vein. That's how I feel about, but I don't want to say you got an extra thirty-eight hundred because you didn't have the thirty-eight hundred when you were spending the thirty-eight hundred.
Yeah, the thirty-eight hundred dollar month savings actually, over the course of the year, would offset, more than offset the current deficit. So, so we're, we're operating in the red. Need to get into the black, but yes, I agree, the problem needs to be solved.
So are you guys agreeable to hold a special meeting if Jennifer can get you a time?
Absolutely.
Jennifer, how long will it take you to get them a max dollar amount with a timeframe, with a dollar per hour? Okay. So can we expect to see something like that next week?
Yeah, yeah, I believe so.
Are you agreeable to send the board, the full board, an email saying this is the date and time of the meeting and this is the outcome of the meeting so that we know that we're moving forward on this issue?
I can, I can give that a try, but it's hard. It's like herding cats trying to get seven people together at one time. So I will, I will say this, this is Tim Mayhann speaking, that at our last meeting, when we decided to do this, the thing that we're doing with Jennifer now and with Stacy and with the Fair Manager, I don't know who made the motion to do that. And then we had a second to that motion. And then we had discussion on that motion. And then after discussion, I called for a vote. And all six members of the Fair Board that vote on motions voted in the affirmative. So that's the history on that. But we do need to move forward. You're absolutely right. And I will see what I can do about getting a meeting set up for next week sometime. Like I said, though, it's hard to try and, and we, we can get a quorum.
What I hear Commissioner Williams requesting is as soon as you're able to pull a quorum together and come to a decision, if you could send an email to our board updating us on the outcome of that decision so we know that progress is being made to-
Yeah, absolutely, I can do that now.
That's what we're asking for.
That's not what you have to do either. It's because if you look at the Fair Manager job description, he's actually required to take the minutes and to distribute that to the people that are requesting it. And so I already sent a request for, in that. So once you're done, you can just say, hey, Mark, can you make sure you send this out to the board? They're requesting it. That's part of the job description of the Fair Manager.
Sure.
And so you don't, it's not giving either of you guys a task.
Sure, yeah, that's not a problem. I can do it either way, it's-
Would it, would it help you guys if you shifted from just in-person only to allow for Zoom, which would allow for greater participation amongst board members to address that this is a volunteer position? And it would open up for community members to be able to see what it is that you're working on as well? Is there a reason not to? Because I confirm, you guys have internet updated on that location. So Marcus addressed that issue. So the only thing would be is, would that be reasonable? Because there's a slowdown of your business based on meeting quorums sometimes. What do you think about that?
I, I think that that, that would be good. Also, I was gonna, I was thinking I could, we have in the past done, and talked to legal and had it okay that we could get a quorum email-wise too, if we needed to. We could communicate that way. The problem with that is, you know, trying to make it an open meeting. But if it's an emergency meeting, then you don't really, it doesn't have to, to meet those same criteria. However, Zoom would be good, but who's going to get the equipment?
So we can work on that. So if you're agreeable to doing Zoom, then we should look at that.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with it myself if we're capable. We've, in the past, we, we haven't had that capability internet-wise. But if you, if you can come up with the equipment and things, and that's always been the stickler for us is, is we can get by without it. And-
So how about you guys address that at your next board meeting, that you vote on that as well? And then I'll work with technology about the equipment associated with being able to move forward with Zooming. Because at your time of the meeting, the county's not doing anything anyhow. And they, they could just show you guys how to do that.
Okay. We'll see if we can, yeah. Well, let's work on that. Yeah.
I think it would help you guys too. Because some of you guys come from distances and work might be difficult.
Sure, yeah, I'd love to stay home.
I have a question about the return of the five thousand dollar check from Sam. Did you get a chance to read the November thirteenth letter?
I did, yes, I did read that letter.
There's a lot of red flags in the letter to include that she says there is no contract and that it's, there's a little bit of lack of clarity as to what actually happened. What was your view of that check?
Of that check? I have no idea what happened there because I'm not really involved in the financials. I, I hear the financial report at each of the meetings and we vote to approve the financials. But that's all I, that's, that's, I did go to the bank twice during the fair to accompany a staff member with a deposit. But as far as financials, that's not something you have. Now we have a treasurer and we have a bookkeeper. And so I'm confident now that, that those financials will be kept properly.
You were paying five thousand dollars a month for financials.
I know what we were paying.
So that's a hard-
And you can continue to hit us over the head with that, but we've passed that now.
No, I'm not talking about that. You said that now you have. I'm asking you, do you understand what happened there? And you're saying now as if you didn't have a bookkeeper before so that you could at least be apprised of it.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, is I don't know why there's, that is, I have no idea what that is. I have no idea why she got what may be an extra check. And we don't even know yet whether it was an extra check, I guess, according to that letter. But she's willing, obviously willing to work with us on it. She sent the check back. She, she says, she's patient. If it does belong to her, she's patient enough to wait for us to figure it out to send it back to her.
So here's my problem. Given the duties and responsibilities she had, how can she not know whether or not she was owed that money or should have given it back?
That would be a good question for her then.
That's it.
Because I don't know those things.
So going back to the earlier question, are you aware of whether or not a contract exists for the services she provided and was paid for?
You know, that's a really foggy thing that I, I know we had a contract at first. And I remember voting, voting to increase that both times. And as far as whether the contract got changed, I don't know.
I'm going to throw, no, that's not accurate because the two boards, two Board of Commissioners ago, we voted for a treasurer and the rate of pay was about thirteen hundred dollars a month. Since then, the Fair Board has systematically increased. And even in this prior fiscal year, I have sent requests to you and to the Fair Manager for the updated contract. Because when I saw this letter, I have this, my question was, well, what's in this contract? Because how does the bookkeeper not understand what check she, that was cut to her? You're, you, you did vote to change. And there was a period of time, Tim, when you guys were trying to create a job description, contract review, that never came to fruition. And your bookkeeper actually, in defense of the payment, says, they never gave me a contract, they're just paying me. Which is a little bit oxymoron for the bookkeeper to be getting money for something that's not contracted. You guys were aware of this because I have asked, what's the updated contract? What duties is she doing today at five thousand dollars that have increased progressively because the Board of Commissioners wasn't notified? And that's where you guys as a board, and I think this is part of my frustration as a commissioner, is you guys are responsible to understand what the bookkeeper is doing. That's why they're coming there. That's why it got voted to begin with. And to say, I don't know whether or not she had a contract, this whole fair is operated on contracts and agreements that you guys are supposed to be making sure that are in place. And so if you don't know what we're paying at, what we're paying out at five thousand, that's concerning. Because we don't have, you guys have an autonomy against our board, which means we either work together or against each other. And I will say, it feels like it's been in opposition for a long time. This payment has been one of those. And that letter was very clear. She actually puts Otis on the Fair Board in her letter as to why she, like, it's basically, I don't know what this check is for, but you could have just called me to ask me why she the check? She's technically not wrong because she shouldn't have gotten a check without a contract. I, I don't like that because, and in this case, this bookkeeper can't audit the other bookkeeper and she does have a contract. And we just want to make sure we do the correct rate of pay, which is the right thing to do.
So if I could chime in here real quick, I think we've been down this road before and we can talk about it all day long. It's not going to solve what has happened in the past. I think that we need to make a clear suggestion to the Fair Board that moving forward, that everything has a contract. I think we can see the purpose of having everything in writing so that we can always fall back on. I think one of the issues of not having the contract for the past bookkeeper may or may not be when the bookkeeper got paid. It sounds like she was kind of painting herself forward, from my understanding. And that's where the, the extra check may or may not have come from. I don't know. I don't like to spend time beating a dead horse, but I do think it's in our purview to explain our wishes to the Fair Board that moving forward, everything has a contract. We can't change what happened in the past. We can keep beating you about what happened in the past. It's not going to do any good. So I just wanted to step in and say that because we've talked about this many, many times and we get the same response back. It's, it's not going to change anything. But without that contract, and we, we all acknowledge, I think, that there is no contract for the, the past bookkeeper. So how do we figure out when, when she was paying herself in the rear or forward and at what time of the month she was getting paid? Because that is what we need to try and solve, I think, is whether or not she did get an extra paycheck.
Well, there's a, so I'm going to, because I was the one speaking and then you gave that comment. There's an obligation of the Board of Commissioners to address what has happened, not to just say, now moving forward. We have to look at what has happened and how the accounting has taken place and understand what they're doing. If we don't have the conversation, especially in this forum, because for this Fair Board, this is the first time after the fair they're coming forward. We have to drill down on what's going on. The, the Board of Commissioners is charged with doing internal auditing of the county. That's part of our function. It's not beating someone down to say, hey, this came out on the thirteenth. I need to understand the mindset because this is going to take a long time to fully understand what happened in this last year while we equally move forward. And if we don't understand the thought process, because we have sat here before and to be honest, the position of this five thousand dollar payment was very different the last time we met. It was, it was met with and very clear, we're going to continue. And I had even brought up, but I can find it cheaper for you, I know that. And now it's, well, I don't know what that bookkeeper was doing, but now we're moving forward. We can't keep doing that. The fair is not successful. And so for me, I have to look at these lines, not just say, contract, because they already knew they needed a contract. That's actually part of the requirement. They have to do contracts.
And I think that's what I just basically said.
So I, I'm going to split the difference here and say that I think we have both issues. We had a historic conversation. This board expressed our concern about the five thousand dollar a month payment for the duties and whether or not a contract was in place. My recollection was the justification for the increase was additional duties were being assigned. And I also recall that we again expressed the need for that to be a contract then in writing to explain the scope of those duties and what the payment would be for them. So as I recall, Tim, that was your position, that there was additional duties being assigned to that person for that fee. To then fast forward to now, to say we have additional information in writing from that individual claiming there's no contract in place. So, and you saying, as I heard you, that you don't know exactly what they were doing. Then how are we justifying that we're paying someone a certain fee Then how are we justifying that we're paying someone a certain fee without clearly in writing indicating what their responsibilities are? And how are we approving checks to that person for doing those duties if we don't know? So that, so I feel like we have a past issue, but I think we also have a current reconciliation question of recent things occurred. We're trying to understand how and why they happened. And I, I feel like the answer is shifting and I don't feel like we're getting a solid response to what, if anything, was an actual written agreement? Where was the accountability for duties being performed and paid for? I'm just not hearing solid answers to those questions. Please proceed.
Okay, sorry. I get impatient. Tim Mahan, we were actually in the process, our fair manager was in the process of, of trying to find that contract and updating that contract at the time after we talked about it, the last meeting we talked about it. And, and then this whole issue of changing bookkeepers came up and everything. And I think that kind of muddied the water as far as trying to nail that down. And now, now here we are. We've got a bookkeeper. We've got, she's identified possible problems. We have a treasurer. So this job is now separated. So it's not an issue of, of how much extra duties and, and that kind of thing. She's going to have extra duties. She's going to do some forensic stuff for us and that's going to cost us extra. So we'll know what our costs are on each individual thing from here. I think we're going to a good place. I really do. I wish we could have done it in a more organized manner, but, but as one board member said, let's just rip the Band-Aid off. And so we just put up with a little bit of blood, you know, in the water while we wait for things to, to, to come to light, to be straightened out. I totally appreciate the oversight and your input, all, all three of you. I do. I think it's necessary. I think that it's, that it's good that we have that communications and relationship. I will say that it's been hard for me in the past because of not just this board. This board is nice. But the board before, it was, I felt like we had to stay in a foxhole because anytime we, we put our heads up, we get hit. And I don't like coming to meetings where I just get whipped and get finger pointed. I like coming to meetings where I feel supported, encouraged, educated, helped and, and some guidance. Because we're serving you, the board, our board is serving you, the county commissioners, because you either don't have the time or expertise to do what we're doing. And that's great. And I love, I love the position. I love being, working with the fair. So I would like to move forward and I will take any kind of, of advice. And whatever we have to do to straighten things out.
I'm gonna thank you. I'm gonna switch to board member Carols online. Nathan Carroll?
Thank you, Board of Commissioners. I just wanna, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. I just want to comment. I'm a contractor. I write contracts for my clients. I write contracts for my subcontractors. I write contracts for my employees. I mean, that's all I do, it seems like sometimes. So I totally appreciate having contracts, having written agreements where everything is in writing. And all parties are in agreement. And it's appalling to me that we had a bookkeeper without a contract. But that's in the past. And I just want to say that over the last couple of board meetings, we have done a lot of work, looking at scopes of work. Hats off to Stacy for, for working on that a lot. And I think Glenn worked on that quite a bit as well. But I just want to say that my experience and my assessment of the board as a board member has been overall to move forward in this direction that we're all on right now. And, you know, evaluating the scopes of work, like Tim was saying, dividing up the treasury and the bookkeeper. All of the, the discussion about issuing a contract for Jennifer. All of that is a positive sign to me. And I just want to communicate to the board that, the board of commissioners, that we are in, you know, in complete agreement, that contracts need to be written. And I can, just want to say that, that that's what we are doing. And I don't, I don't think, in my opinion, the mistakes that we've made in the past are still present. And I think we're moving forward. And that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, in, in response to the comments on the topic, it's leading me into the conversation, the question of what policies does the fair board have in place with how you function? So how, how do you decide what to do? What do you look to for guidance? You mentioned that, Tim, right? Guidance and, and that's, I appreciate hearing that. So do you guys have bylaws in place, policies, anything you look to to say, hey, we're, we're going to bring in a contractor to do something? Here's what we do when we, when we want to add, you know, bring a contractor in to work for the fair board? Or when we want to, you know, put on a new event, what, you know, we're going to go contract with this vendor and that vendor to do these things. Do you guys have any, any written policies, bylaws, procedures that help guide your actions?
I don't know that we have any written, but we do have procedures we follow. SOPs basically that, that get followed whenever we do that. We know that, we know that if we want to do an event and we need a contractor, that, that fair staff will find us, find us contractor. Maybe somebody on the board knows, happens to know somebody that, that does a particular thing that we need to. And if we need to, we'll, we usually get our maintenance guys, if we need something maintenance done, usually get more than one quote for things. And, and then we look at the quotes and talk about them and
So I think
Decide whether, you know, at that point, then, then somebody makes a motion and somebody makes a second. And then after we discuss it, I call for a, call for a vote and that's how we decide.
And I think, you know, being able to leverage staff capabilities, people who know folks in the community that might have an interest in working on something, that's all great. But what I'm hearing is, in my personal experience, right? One of the things slipped through the cracks when I do things from memory versus following a procedure, things of that nature. So I think adopting standard operating procedures, like you were saying, policies, bylaws, whatever terminology we want to use, that say for our most important responsibilities as a fair board, we have some, some basic policies or operating procedures about how we accomplish those things. For me, I think that would help create consistency that right now it sounds like it's, it's however the conversation goes, but if you guys don't have a guiding document to look at as you're having dialogue as a board, it's easy to go down a path, maybe that's not the most beneficial. Versus if you have something to look at for guidance, you can keep asking the question to say, are we following that guidance? Or are, if we're not following it, why are we choosing not to follow it? What's the rationale? And can we come up with something that's reasonable? You know, hey, this isn't working. We're going to change that guiding document because we find it doesn't work. But to, to not have it, I think is probably an underlying cause of a lot of the problems because then we just invent things as we go. And that's right, that's, some people are really good at solving problems, but we don't want to create problems. We want to avoid them. So I'm, my, as a member of our board, what I'm hearing, what I'm ascertaining is that might be really beneficial for you guys. I go to our responsibility, I believe from an accountability perspective, is we have to look at Idaho code, right? The 22-204 that says, these are the duties of the fair board. And so from time to time, our board needs to assess, is the fair board actually being responsive to those Idaho code, those statutory duties? And it had, for me, it has five primary aspects, being the custody and care of the property used for the fair, right? Responsibility of, of monies being used and the receipt and the accounting for that. And all of the aspects of that, there's really kind of three categories of it. And then having that written plan that gets updated from time to time. And so personally, I think it's critical that the fair board choose to adopt policies that build alignment with the Idaho code to show how the fair board's working in compliance with the Idaho code. Because to me, that's just like the foundational starting point is to show statutory compliance with what you guys are doing. And then from there, you could add other policies as you see needs that come up. But that would be my recommendation is while trying to deal with a known accounting issue, also saying the fair needs a foundation to build on, to help solve problems and improve the performance in, you know, in the future. Because we obviously, you know, there's the questions that need to be talked about, about how is the fair going to plan to create financial stability? You know, what are we going to do about trying to get more interest and excitement in the fair? I don't know if you guys have the numbers. If you do, I'd love to see them. My perception is that we've seen a decline over the last number of years. A decline, my perception. I don't have numbers. In attendance, in, in attendance of attendees, participation of vendors, all, I mean, just anecdotally, when I go to the fair each year, it looks smaller and smaller and smaller. And so what's the plan to go forward? And I think the plan should be, have a, a foundation in some policies that you guys are going to plan to use, some standard operating procedures to say, here's how we're going to move forward. So make sure at least we're in statutory compliance. And then from there, we can, as time allows, we can expand on other details. But at the moment, there's just enough unanswered questions about what's the actual underlying cause? I appreciate the effort that's going into trying to answer the questions on the P and L, but we don't really know the underlying cause of the budget deficit for the year. We have some ideas, but we don't know exactly. And better bookkeeping can help with that in the future. But building a plan around fuzzy data is going to be a challenge. But I think if you guys start with having policies that you're actually looking to as a board to make sure that you're operating consistently under, it would help prevent the accidental, well, we weren't sure how we got here situations.
This, this, this past year, Tim Mahan, this past year was the first year that we've actually been able, our, our fair manager has been able to collect data. Of course, he's new and we've had other issues with previous fair managers. And so this 2024 is the first year that, that he's actually been able to collect data. And moving forward, we, we have a lot clearer picture now than we had on, on, on what things are, are, we intuitively knew, like that the concert was not a moneymaker. We're going to, we intuitively know that we're going to lose money because of the time of year. You've got, you've got the festival at Sandpoint going on basically the same time with some big headliners, bigger names than what we can afford. And the fact that we, we can't afford a big enough name to draw people, basically what you'd have to draw people from outside the area, like the festival does, to be able to make that pay. We intuitively know those things, but we look at that, in some ways, we look at that as providing, providing for the community. And this year, we're, we're probably not going to have a concert this next year. We're coming, we're coming up with different, different things that we'll be able to do. We've did some different things this last week, last fair that people enjoyed that were basically cost, zero cost to the fair. That, you know, incorporating like the ranch sorting into an evening event, incorporating the barrel racing prelims that they always do before, before our typical rodeo night performance. They always have the barrel racing finals. We've incorporated the barrel racing prelims into an evening's free entertainment for the community. And there is, we do get money from some of that, just it's, it's not a, but it's, it's providing, it's saving us money that we would have spent if we hadn't of, did I say that right?
Ish.
Okay. It, it's, it's, we're not spending money we don't have on something that we're not going to get a return on. We're, we're, we're getting a small return on something we're not spending money on.
Can, can you kind of explain the comment you just made that you went into the concert knowing that you were going to lose money and give kind of a, what is the, at what point would you say no? What loss is too great? Because I, I
Well, we've said no, we're not going to do it next year.
But you did it, but this is actually the second time though, because the last budget cycle, when we went through with the concert, the comment was given to the board that, well, we didn't have enough time, so we just moved forward even though we didn't know. And on this one, it's, it's kind of the same thing. So what is the risk reward? Because I didn't, I did, I thought it just didn't net money for you. I didn't know that you guys went into it knowing it was going to cost you money.
Well, let me, let me put it this way. Let me put it this way. I said intuitively, we kind of knew. We don't have hard figures and that's why I said 2024 is the first year that we've actually got hard figures that we can, we can go on. And we had great hopes for the concert this year at the fair, but it just didn't, it's just the wrong time. It's, it's the wrong time. We can't get a big enough name to get the crowd. So we've made, so we've made that decision now that we're not going forward. We probably won't have that concert. And if we do have a concert, it'll be in a different form. It may not be in the arena. It may not, it may be just a local band performing for the people out on the lawn or, or whatever it might be. But we're, we're in the process of rethinking that now. And that's, that's our thought. That's our, our thought process. We've made that decision. We've made that realization. So you're asking, I think, why we didn't do that before? I'm telling you, we're doing that now because now we have hard, we have hard numbers.
And I, and I guess, and I'm, there's an element of, look, this is the second time though, that, that we had the conversation about the concert. Because there was a concert the year before where we were in the same situation. And your answer was intuitively, you knew that you weren't going to make money on it. And that's where having a process by which the fair board makes decisions on to even have the concert is something that you should have because that's $17,000 that went out of the fair budget. I'd like to ask a question on contract work. Do you see an underutilization of staff that have job descriptions where they can do some of the tasks, but that were used in outside vendors as an element that hits the fair budget as something that can be improved upon?
If I understand you're right, you're asking why, you're asking why some of the fair staff doesn't do some of the work that we're having outside vendors do?
I'm asking if you see that there's an opportunity to capture some of what you're sending out for contract work because we have staff members who have job descriptions that contain some of the work that we're outsourcing?
I, I think that that's, that when we have something come up, that it's done on an individual basis. Do we have somebody who has the time to do that? Do we, is it going to be better that, that we get somebody who's an expert at it? That's going to take less time and actually end up costing us less money in, in the long run? There's, I don't know. Do you have anything on that, Quentin?
So and I, maybe there needs to be kind of a, I want, maybe looking at, as you look at process, the process by which you guys shift work from paid staff who it's in their job description to perform a task to contract work that you're, the way in which you're doing it. Because it looks like that there's opportunity to address that aspect on some of the things that get outsourced.
Okay.
I think that I've, and I've heard comments about sometimes as to why the fair board just goes for contract work versus using staff. And that's why I asked for the job descriptions. We send quite a bit out when it looks like we're paying for it in salaries. And if there's an element, there's a reason to do that. If you identify, I've got a maintenance technician and this is a form of maintenance that is not within this person's purview, but I have spent this much money in this area, that's That's something that you can try and recapture in a different way if we identify those things. I don't think for a lot of these job descriptions, people aren't working their job descriptions to the fullest. And maybe comments have been made about why that is, but it might be an opportunity that you need to change a job description, that that needs to be reviewed, or that we need to invest in a staff member so that they can pull that task in if we're having to do something on a regular and consistent basis. But there's a lot of outsourcing contract work happening when you have the jobs here in, or the job descriptions that capture some of that. I, I'm not picking a person, I'm saying as an overarching thing, that's where some of this money does get spent that we might recapture.
Okay.
Quentin Duckin, Fair Board Vice Chair. That's kind of a broad spectrum question on that, right? I, I feel that you have some notations or particulars that you're referring to as far as employees and job description and outsourcing contracting. One of the things I bring to attention is the brand new bleachers at the South End. With using our maintenance techs that are not certified in bleacher construction, we saved $30,000 in constructing without hiring out, contracting those bleachers to be constructed. So if there's some more particulars, maybe that's for a more of a private setting of, you know, what you're pertaining to as far as utilizing the staff versus contracting out. I mean, that's, to me, that feels like it's kind of broad. I don't know exactly what you're talking about. And if you had some examples, unless it needs to be talked about in a private session. We try to utilize our manager to utilize the staff in a way because we don't, as a board, we do not direct the staff of what to do. We consult with the manager and it's the manager's job to run the staff. So I'm a little bit confused, I guess, on particulars of what we're, the fair board's contracting out work that the staff is, has time and is eligible to do. Part of that stuff too, I would say, is the policy for comp time for the employees. I know it's been adjusted a little bit, but I know it's extremely difficult for them to be able to burn the time that they build up to get through the fiscal year and still maintain some of that stuff. So that, that's also been part of an issue. So it's, I mean, it's been brought to attention that, you know, the policy's fiscal year versus calendar year carryover, you know, you guys know, you're all nodding your heads, you know what I'm talking about. So therefore sometimes we might have to contract out something because the staff's hands are tied, right? And we need to still move forward to get stuff accomplished. So if, if there's more to that, I guess I'm a little bit lost on what you're referring to. And so like I said, if you want to state maybe some particulars, or if it needs to wait to be in a, addressed in a private setting, I'm, I'm all for it.
Actually, we were speaking in the same vein because you identified a project that the staff did that didn't get outsourced. That's what I'm saying that we need to be looking at is our staff performing jobs. And so there are particulars, but in general, there's money that gets spent to external vendors. And your example of the comp time is a perfect example. I did submit a suggestion that both H, that HR take a look at staffing that hit that. And so it happens also with EMS and law enforcement where they hit that comp time or they can't work additional hours to address, how do we cash things out to address that there's a stoppage based on policy? That's also part of what you would do in this particular case. All my comment is, is saying is you have a number of staff members that have job descriptions. If, for example, if we were going to flip the bleacher and we outsourced it, it's reasonable to say we outsourced it because we wanted a certified person putting together bleachers. Then that puts a very clear, this is why we did this. That's all I'm saying that you do is that when it's a job that could be performed by maintenance staff, for example, that they perform those jobs. If there's a need to hire a contractor, that it's very clear why the board would move in that direction to approve that type of a service out of the budget so that we're documenting it. So it's not a, we're in line on the same thing is that we do have staff, but equally every year we come across kind of the same issue of the hours with staff and how do we address that? And so HR is looking at that aspect of how do we address those three types of employees where they hit that line? Because then it becomes that work-life balance dissatisfaction of feeling like you're not getting what you've earned, but then you hit the ceiling on something.
Correct.
So understood.
So that I have a better understanding, is there something in particular that you noticed that we or they contracted out that the fair staff could have done? Or are you just making a blatant statement?
I'm making a generic statement because it isn't for me to tell them that they didn't need to contract out. I am saying that when you're doing that, make sure you're considering that what's in the job descriptions that we're paying for. I shouldn't say, for example, you guys should not have done the bleachers, you should have contracted that out. That's the fair board and there's a line between this board and that. I'm saying when you look at your budget, you guys do outsource. We should make sure that when you look at some of these job descriptions, that these job descriptions are being utilized to their fullest.
That makes sense.
Because you shorthand yourself on both directions. If this job description doesn't meet the needs, but you're paying someone, then they're getting paid and they're not doing something. If this job description has somebody doing work that exceeds the job description, we have to address the job description. There's, so like my comment about Mark's job description tells him to write the minutes. So it wouldn't be some, I'm not asking, and actually to disseminate the minutes. It says he's a secretary for the fair board. I didn't create that, that's in the job description. So when I said, do your meeting and tell us the answer, that's in the job description. That's what I'm asking you guys to understand what you guys have to work with out there and that you send, that you do a good job of saying why you need to spend money. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, Nathan Carroll, board member of the fair. I just wanted to make the board aware, a couple of months ago, the board passed a motion to implement a change in the way that the finances were reported, the way that bills were approved for payment. And that motion was to always have the amount next to the budget. So we would always be aware on every financial decision, how it compared to the budget. So that topic has been a meeting and just wanted you guys to know that the fair board has recognized that. And a month or two ago, we did pass a motion to begin to make that change so that we would always know what our budget was whenever a financial decision was made.
I think that was a great idea personally. I'm glad to hear that. I think that's also a prime example of if you were to begin a policies document, when you vote something like that into existence, you just add that as an administrative function, right, to that document because you as a board approved a policy essentially. And so if you document that, now it's in writing, everyone can refer back to it. You don't have to try to go scrape it out of minutes from years prior and figure out if we did or didn't continue to follow that policy. So I, I'm putting you on the spot, I'll admit it. I'm, I'm going to ask, as members of the fair, are you willing to establish your own policy and, you know, begin that documentation? And I would say that with, with the onus on anything you've already, you know, created to capture that in writing for easy reference, but also please focus on Idaho Code 22-204. And you, you know, you have county supplied legal counsel to assist with making sure that, that your policies are actually accomplishing the, the intent of Idaho code. And so you can call on them to assist you with that process. But I am asking for my own benefit as a member of this board, are you willing to do that? Cause I, I'd like to see follow through with that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm definitely willing to do that. And I'll employ the rest of the board in helping to do that. Because this instance that we're just talking about, you saying, well, that's a policy. Well, we've done that kind of thing before and it is in the minutes, but there you go.
Right. If you don't remember that you voted to do it and you can't easily reference it, it's hard to follow through.
I think that's an excellent, excellent idea. I appreciate that.
Yeah, so I appreciate hearing that you guys did it. So I'm trying to figure out, how do we turn that into something actionable?
Correct.
It's easy to, to need to refer to for that positive improvement going forward.
You bet. That sounds great.
I see we have a-
Before Wayne goes, let me bring up your other board member because Ben messaged some issues that he wanted addressed to the board. And one of them was debit card receipts, a different process. So I'm going to ask Jennifer, what's the process that you're going to use for debit card receipts? What I was, that, that was one of the issues. And then a, he said that there's not a budget, but that Stacy, he and Stacy have been tasked with a project that they feel that they can do and maybe expanding on what that project is as it relates to putting together a very good usable budget for the fair. So debit receipts and not just a journal entry on an Excel website, but actually showing that the receipt represents the journal entry.
Yes, Jennifer Wyman, bookkeeper for fair board. That is something that I had noticed as well, that we had a debit card and I had asked where those receipts were kept, I believe, that they were being kept in the drive. However, I later learned that the board was not receiving copies of those to review. So that is something that I had stated that I would implement is every board meeting, you will also get a copy of every single receipt that hit that bank ledger for the prior month that I had reconciled. I've also been working with the fair manager, Mark, on giving me better descriptions on those. Because as we know, sometimes a Walmart receipt does not clearly tell you what the purchase was. And I was told it was supplies or, you know, a gin, that's the category it would go to or the expense code you would use, but it doesn't describe, was that washcloths, was that, you know, toilet paper, like what that is. And so Mark has agreed to give me more details on that so that when I present those receipts, that is, oh, you know, something that the board has access to. As far as debit cards in general, I have made the recommendation to move from debit to credit just for liability and risk factors. So I do believe I have the board's support in that. We just need to get that moving forward, but those would be the same type of receipts. On a credit card statement, all those receipts seem to be visible because it can be expensed properly, but as you can see, can you identify in that profit and loss, how much of that was on debit card? And was it reviewed, approved? Was it within the approved amount that was budgeted? Those are the things that the board has to be able to see firsthand and keep tabs on. I'm also new, so I don't know past budget items. So as receipts are coming in, that's where I'm hoping that the board is paying attention to that and knowing that we budgeted this much for this project. And as those receipts come in, that they're seeing that that totals the correct amount. For example, I was told that there's a maximum $5,000 monthly approved for debit card purchases. And my question was, who's monitoring that? Because there's debit cards coming through, receipts coming through, but are we adding them and making sure that it's not exceeding? Is that a per purchase, a per month? I don't know. So I have a lot of questions as we move forward. Same thing with the, a couple of months ago, approving that we're going to have the budgeted expense with the bill. My question would be, is that budgeted for the whole allotment? Like if you have this much expense to the repairs on the barn, but it costs this much for the roof, this much for the groundwork, this much for the siding, are we doing it by individual items? So I have a lot of things that I need to meet with the board and discuss and really drill down to what the expectations are and how they've already approved things in the past. As far as budgeting, I know you're going to ask Stacy to talk on that too, but I have offered to help them in that as well. So we can now have a budget report that not only would show you the actuals, but you'll see the budget and what percentage you went over or you were under, have you exceeded the total allotment? But that's by category, not by specific contractor. So like I said, if they had budgeted $5,000 for a roof and the bill came in at 4,000, in my presentation, am I supposed to say that the bill was 4,000, you budgeted 5,000? Or am I supposed to show it in my normal reporting that it was $4,000 expense, you've allotted 10,000 for the year for this? Those types of comparisons, because that's different. They would need to know probably both, but those things need to be, I guess, you know, explained to me on what I need to give them to be successful in reviewing it too.
Can the board clarify, are you saying $5,000 as if you're marrying the Bonner County credit card policy? Or is it that you guys have your own policy that says a debit card? Debit cards are very dangerous. So I'm going to give a disclaimer as to why you don't do that one. But where, where does the $5,000 spend per debit card come from? Where is that? Will create it?
I'm sure it was created in me, in our meetings. I'd have to go back through.
It's not written down?
You know, I did not, I did not come prepared to answer that question.
So-
So I'd have to go back through our minutes and, and find out where that is. And that, Stacy, you know how long we've had that debit card? Oh, I know, I'm just wondering, that debit card, I don't think we've had that long. And I was just wondering.
That's new. So the first one is, is there, you, you should have a signed agreement by the authorized user, but it shouldn't be a debit card. One of, outside of access to the account as a whole, if, for example, fraud hits you and you spent on a debit card, it doesn't get treated the same as if it were a credit card. And so that's reason enough to not do purchases like that because you're given direct access to the full account for that versus a credit card. You'd be surprised that they get treated differently, but if I steal 5,000 on your credit card, the credit card company gives it back to you. If I do it on your debit card, you have to fight me to get your money back. So do, do you guys have a plan? I'll, I'll worry about this. And who's the user of it?
Quentin Duckin here, just to kind of help and light from, from what I recall from that is. So the way the purchasing procedure is put in place that, you know, needs board approval for purchasing stuff, you know, everyday operations and maintenances or something that goes wrong. If I remember correctly, not quote unquote, but our fair manager has that to where he has that, is it $5,000? It was either $4,000 or $5,000 allotted to do unapproved purchases to keep the operation and maintenance of the fair going on. So a perfect example would be like, say, preparing for the rodeo and a horse kicks and breaks a couple of boards. We need to get the boards replaced real quick. We're not going to have a board meeting to go and approve, to go buy two boards to replace that, right? So they run to the store, Home Depot, get some boards, put it back up. As far as debit card versus credit card, we're in the midst of coming up with a better solution with that, with Jennifer's recommendations to get away from the debit card. But as far as your question about why and how there's the 5,000, it's so that way operation maintenance of every day can continue without being halted and needing approval to make small purchases to make sure we're moving forward for every day, everyday operations. Does that help answer your question?
I might chime in here. That'd be a great thing to have in a policy instead of in the minutes nine and a half years ago that you can't find.
Absolutely.
Right? Whereas a policy, you could just reference real quick and, and you'd have it in front of you. So something to help start building those policies is-
For sure.
That would be something, that would be a perfect fit for a policy.
Yeah, the fair- I think that's a recurring theme now. As, as you're working with the bookkeeper and the treasurer, questions have been coming up. As those questions get answered by the board on how you want to proceed, just keep adding that to the policy, right? Cause again, it's-
Tim, can I ask you a question? Because we've been here before. Are you guys agreeable to taking a look at a different county's fair and use it as a foundation to start from? Because financially speaking, I understand the way you said what you said because it makes sense. But from a, I got to protect my budget of what you have access to, it's not how we treat budgets. And that's a concern given this is, and it's not this board, it's just in general. We, the job isn't just to make it easy. We're supposed to sometimes make it a little bit hard to spend, not necessarily very easy. So for example, taking a look at, had the answer been like, you don't need 5,000 every month, but probably during a certain period of time, you needed to go up a little higher for incidentals based on objective information that you might have for a dollar mill. But to give- But to give someone $5,000 a month access every single month, that's what this county actually looked at, of how many credit cards you have out there. And technically, you're on the hook for a guaranteed dollar amount if something bad happens. We have to look at, how do you protect the budget of the fair, too? Not just the ease of access to the funds to keep it going. They go hand in hand, but protecting the budget is important, too. And I think that it's hard to think that you guys as volunteers could do a whole plan. But we brought this up before. If we secure another, a couple of counties' fair documents, could you guys consider adopting something? Because we had this discussion last time, too. Adopt something that gives records, not just we voted on it. Because that means that we're just looking for minutes that are difficult to go through, so that there's some standard that you're using.
I believe that's the policy that Ron was talking about, doing that. And I think that's an excellent idea. I have no problem going to, we have, we have a relationship with Cootney County, and they, their fair, they put a fair on for a couple of different counties at one time. And there, I went down there last year, when they had a workshop, and an open training weekend, and I went down for that. They're going to do it again this year, and I'm going to go down again this year. At that time, I could probably, you know, before that, I could get ahold of Lexi and-
If I email you their five-year master plan right now, will you send it to your board and maybe take a look at it?
If you email me-
Their master plan for Cootney County Fair?
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'll definitely take that, and make copies of whatever is pertinent, and give it to the board. You bet. That's, I think that'd be an excellent start.
Usually, it's easier to glean information from others that have figured out how to make it work than trying to reinvent the wheel for ourselves, right?
Absolutely, yes.
If I have your email address already, which I don't for you, I will send it to as many people, so you don't have to forward. I don't have one for Quentin, though. Okay. So I'll say, I still don't have one for him.
I'll forward it to him, and then I'll send you his email address, too.
I'm going to go to public comment here, because Mr. Martin's had his hand up for a while. Mr. Martin?
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident, for the record. A few things. First, I'd like to thank the Fair Board for working on that front parking lot, getting it in much better condition than it has been for millennium, it seems like. Couple of questions that I have. I know that it has been requested multiple times for a one, five, 10-year plan goal for the fair. To my knowledge, that has not occurred. I know that the number of vendors has gone down. There were at least three vendors that I spoke to this past summer, that stated they would not be back, whether there was an increase in rental space or not, just because they were not happy, satisfied with what was going on at the fair. I have a concern that if you know that Sandpoint's having their music festival, that you're trying to compete with them having a concert. To me, that does not make, make sense. You know, especially with jobs and things that I have done in the past. I hate saying it, but, you know, if money is a problem, maybe it's a good reason to take a hiatus for a year or two, to get yourself set, financially ready, have a grand reopening, and make a big deal about it. I know that there was a problem with fire extinguishers. I've not been back in the buildings to check those, but they were outdated. And that does need to take place. I know that falls under mark, but that also falls under the Fair Board. AEDs, and I do know that they're making stop the bleed systems also out there, and I would like to see the Fair Board look at that. And I know that there's been a problem with the fire hydrants, water flow, and leaks. There is property behind the fairgrounds that is going to have residential properties put on it. That would be a great place to be able to tap in and bring your water line into all your hydrants. Because I can almost guarantee you that the water coming in from the front of the fairgrounds boyer is going to be a reduced flow to those hydrants. And I do know that, you know, the Fair Board is responsible for the safety of the public and for the buildings. And it would also be nice if the meeting minutes were shared with the public, at least if you went to the meeting. But if they could be shared, so that the public themselves could see what's going on, I think that would be, you know, a big positive direction for the public seeing the Fair Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was one of the things Ben also mentioned, was improvement of community, public relations between the Fair Board. And maybe the, I've heard a lot of comment about Zoom, maybe that might be a way of helping people feel more part of it.
Could you pass the microphone down, please? Thank you.
Anita Palmer, community member and Fair and 4H stakeholder. So I would like to see public comment during the agenda items. So in 4H meetings, Market Animal Committee meetings, when we have an agenda item, gets brought up, we talk about it as a board committee, but then people at the meeting go, well, why is this? Well, what about this? At the Fair Board, as a stakeholder, I don't feel that I have any comment to what they're talking about. So I would like to see that. Zoom meetings, because the public should be, not have to attend the meeting to see it. Also, there's never, ever been bylaws, almost 100 years of fair. I'm just asking a question, because it's almost 100 years.
Thank you. I do have a question on the initial financial reporting. I'm just circling back for a minute. In light of the net operating deficit with a little over 41,000, what's the actual current cash position when it comes to operating expenses?
I think it's worth noting before we end is, in spite of kind of all of the stuff, you guys have got a good amount of people that still sponsor the fair. And their commitment to the fair has been, what's really kind of drugged the fair year after year. And so that's worth noting, because there've been some very good supporters, not just in people that financially sponsor, but people that actually, especially a huge support within the 4H community, of volunteers and parents and students that really want to see the success of the fair. And so hopefully, we move in that direction. But those sponsors are owed a big thank you, and the community members, because they are the backbone to a lot. And I think you have a lot of, I think when you hear a comment of people wanting to pull out, that maybe the public comment is an opportunity to hear, what are the issues and concerns in a constructive way that people want to see, so that they'll might want to commit more? Would you, this is a lot that you guys are doing budget-wise. Would you guys be agreeable to coming before the Board of Commissioners to give updates on where you are at the, with the budget? And showing movement? Because some of the comments I hear, but they are the same thing that we heard before, we need to move forward with it. Because we're not, we're not moving in that direction. And there's things that we can do to help each other. Like, I sent you the five-year plan also for Cootney County Fair. There's, if you say what you need, we can try and help get it. We can't require you to do anything, but this is our only opportunity to say our issues and concerns, and push. Because I have, how you guys make decisions on the money concerns. I don't know about operating a fair. I have concerns on the money part of it, that aren't going away right now. And I, if there's something that I'm missing, I'm willing to hear it. But I think you've, I haven't seen what Jennifer's done on the EMS, so I think you've made a good decision, and it will reduce your expenditure line. But I, I just want us to be saying we're moving in a good step the next time. And I really think maybe, is, I think Glenn was working on the five-year plan. Are you guys still doing that for the fair? Glenn, I also forwarded you a copy of that. I did not have Nathan's, or I did have Nathan's email. I didn't have Tanya's email. That's why I didn't. Glenn, are you still working on a plan? Is there a shift related to the financial budget changes?
As a whole, the entire board has been looking at prioritizing the strategic plan we started. Stacy has been pulling probably the lion's share of the work since the initial plan was developed. But the past couple of meetings, we've been attempting to continually look at that plan and prioritize, okay, the hydrants needs to be up here, but perhaps this item, we're pushing off further. So we're trying to reformat it, so it's easier to see where our priorities lie, and which things are most important. So that is something that we are working on continually.
Okay. One, one other comment that came forward from the public and other board members was the use of executive session, how you guys go into executive session with following open meeting law, that it, sometimes it's not on your agenda, and it's just a question of, do you want to? You have to agendize doing it, but you have to state the code and the reason that you're going into executive session. And so on some of that, there, people are asking that, it's not, it's not a running commentary of, I just don't want to have an uncomfortable conversation. It has to be very narrowly construed as to why you're going into executive session. And then, your vote happens, obviously, outside of the executive session. But that was another comment that was made.
Do we have any additional public comment? Does the Fair Board have anything else they'd like to discuss or present?
I wanted to clarify with Mr. Martin's comment, that fire extinguishers, AEDs, I know recently, we've had an AED repaired. Meeting minutes at the handout, I believe that we are going to be talking about that at our next meeting. And I hope that he understands that we do have, and has been executed, and it's been executed for the six months I've been on the board, the five-year plan. And we're trying to tie that with our budgeting process. We've slowed on its progress because of this transition from a board treasurer, bookkeeper position to Jennifer. Because I have not been able, in my entire six months on this board, been able to extract the information from what we have that says, this is where we are with our budget at this point, and they're asking, someone's asking for X amount to do this project. And I know Nathan Carroll's brought it up, that, you know, we don't have that information. We are not making these decisions based on where we are in that budget. No one comes to that meeting with that information. Which I know, it seems like a silly little exercise. This is the only way I know how to start getting it out there, until we can get enough data that is categorized correctly, in order to make that happen. So I do think that we're moving forward with it. And I'm thankful that we're having a better attempt by the board to have a relationship with the BOCC and other stakeholders in the community, by opening up our meetings, giving them handouts when they come in the door, those who want to participate and see us, so that we can retain those stakeholders as part of this fair. Because it is their input, the community, as our donors, as our people who are going to come and volunteer and make things happen for us. But I feel like this board shuts them out, and it happens all the time. And then, not working with the BOCC. So in light of your, hey, will you give updates? I'd like to know exactly how that happens, and how do we make those wheels turn? Who do I contact to do that?
You can email, I'll email all of you guys, save email thread, I'll just do another email that says, just email the BOCC staff, because that's the front-end office, and then they'll email all three board members. So whenever you want to give an update, we have a Tuesday business meeting. It would also allow you to say, this is what the fair's working on, and it's a free advertisement of what's events. Like, there've been some events where I just happened to go over to the treasurer's office, and I saw that there was an event, because there was a poster there. But use us to also communicate and help foster that relationship. So whenever you want to communicate something, I did put a request in to send over the minutes to myself, because I can't, I'm not speaking for the other two board members. Because it's just, you have a lot of people pulling for the fair to succeed. And it's, your comment is, a lot of people have that same feeling, that they don't feel like they're part of it. And I'll say it the way I've been told by one person is, until it's time to sponsor and write a check for the fair, that's when people seem to be heard the most, is, how much money am I going to give the fair versus, I'm part of the fair community? Because some people have absorbed a lot of rate increases that they haven't liked, but they want to support the fair.
Quentin Duckin, Vice Chair, Fair Board. Just to kind of add to that a little bit, is, we post our agendas, our meetings are open to everyone. And going to Zoom will help people come and check, but if people have issues, concerns, ideas, we don't have closed-door board meetings. They are open to everyone, every two weeks. So if community members want to come and voice, they can. We're not shutting the door on them. I just want whoever's out there listening, that if you want ideas, or you have ideas or concerns or questions, come to the meetings. Okay? We're going to try to make it more available, but they're open meetings. We do not shut out the public at our meetings.
But do you talk to the doors open, so that people can come into the building versus sitting in the parking lot? Like, for your meeting, what time? Do the doors open for the meeting, so that they know what time to arrive?
About 5:15, yeah.
One of the things people have asked is, and I, and we did email Robert and ask him to kind of do an update on open meeting law, especially with producing the agenda and the package, to have that available before Monday, because that's one of the things that have, people have asked as well. But I think it's good for people to hear that you want their comments. Do you guys have, one of the things is, we need to use the Bonner County ID address. You guys aren't using that. Everybody's using their own address. But like, when I email Tim, I do it to Gmail and to Bonner County ID. If there is a problem, we have to fix the problem. We can't ignore that, because I don't have access to your personal email, but your obligation for public records exists, and you want to use the Bonner County ID address. And then, that might be a way also of the public saying, hey, I want to email Quentin a question, or ask for something to be on the agenda, which all board members can put on the agenda. All board members can approach any Board of Commissioner. There's not a restriction from the board. You just can't do serial meetings with the board. But you can always come and say, hey, Andrew, I want you to clarify this. There's no restriction on talking.
Sure. Can I ask Quentin a question real quick, since he has the microphone? So where can one find those notices of when the meetings are, and what's on the agenda or your, your agenda?
The Bonner County Fairgrounds website.
Bonner County Fairgrounds website?
Yep.
Are you guys going to update that, so it's an easier find? Are you guys struggling with that aspect of your website? Do you need assistance with making your website more user-friendly?
I think it's pretty friendly. I can use it, which says a lot.
Or you just know where you guys put it, versus user-friendly to people?
No, I have to search for it, you know, but I'm learning it, because I did it once. I don't think, I really don't think that we have an issue with the website, but then, you're talking to a non-initiate there when it comes to websites. So I would, that'd be a good question to ask Mark, our Fair Manager, if he would like any help with that. any help with that, because he would be the one doing it. It'd be the fair staff that, that maintains the website and everything.
You guys don't give direction for how you want your site to look?
Well, I guess not because it looks fine to me, but I haven't seen any problems with it myself, but.
I was getting to the point of especially if you're going to do Zoom where there's an opportunity for a Zoom link, if you updated your website to be a little bit more user-friendly, understanding that maybe this, you guys might not within the staff be able to do that, but that you could always ask Marcus for assistance with that because he said he's helping.
Yeah, we're definitely open to it.
Quentin answered for you. He said, yes, they're open to it.
Please hand the mic to Stacy. Sorry, Jennifer.
Jennifer, and this is more from public, not from the bookkeeper role, but I will say in years past, because I was a 4-H parent and leader and I had wanted to come to some meetings and I think it's not, it's not very well understood how to get to the meetings. The fair office is the door that I would try to go through to go to a fair board meeting and it is locked. I didn't even learn until my first attempt in trying to attend as a bookkeeper. I thought the doors were locked and then I had to wait until another late member showed up and showed me that there's a side door that you can go through. So I would recommend that you guys post a meeting, whether it's something every meeting can say, fair board meeting inside, you know, please come in, something, because it is very unknown, at least for me from past. Now I know. Second piece is as far as agendas, I am learning and I'm trying to understand, is there a time limit? I know we have a time limit on, or a deadline to submit items for the agenda. Are they, how quickly or how early are they published to the public on the website? And also can we bring back putting them on the Facebook page as well? I know years past that is something that I noticed is that there would be a fair agenda on the Facebook page and sometimes that reaches public quicker. And then the third part to my comment or questions is going to be minutes. How, is there a rule? Is there a best practice like for publishing minutes? How long after a meeting, how, what is acceptable? What is deemed too long? Because that has also been a concern is we can't find the minutes until way later.
So all of what you said related to the meeting, the minutes, the agendas has been requested that Robert come and do a specific fair board training so that everybody gets the update of how it's supposed to happen because it, there has been inconsistencies. Sometimes the meeting gets things added on that Monday and it's not something that's on that agenda or bills added and you're not supposed to do things like that. And so it was identified as an opportunity to learn on that. So he has already received that to come out and do that, but now you got to hand, oh.
I can hear that.
Christina Nicholas Anderson for the record. I'd just like to address a couple of things. First of all, with finding the meetings on the website, you have to go, when you first turn on the website and it's got all the dates there, oftentimes it doesn't list the meetings. So you have to go into Fairground Info and find the meetings that way. So it can be a little bit tricky. Like today's meeting wasn't listed when you first opened the site and it says like important notice and it's got all the dates because it's a special meeting, it's not listed. And sometimes the business meetings aren't listed. That's, that's the second meeting that they have during the month. So it's not very consistent. So I just point that out for those online that are trying to find the meetings. You have to kind of go hunting for them sometimes. So that's the first comment. Second comment is I'd like to follow up on what both Jennifer and Anita said with regards to public comment. Public comment's only allowed at one of the two meetings per month, not both. It would be cool if they added it to both meetings. It's only allowed at the first meeting and it's right at 5:30. So if you're even a minute or two late, you may miss your opportunity and it's three minutes, just like it is here. So I really think if you could comment throughout the meeting, it would be really cool. Sometimes they allow that and sometimes not. It's usually who you are and what the topic is. So, and, and how the meeting's going. So you may have an opportunity or not. Usually it's not. And that's fine because that's the rule. So if you get an opportunity, that's just an extra bonus, I guess. So if it was, you know, part of the agenda that you were allowed to, then, then you at least have an opportunity. And if you didn't get called on, then I guess you just don't get called on. So I really want to appreciate that Tim is open and the rest of the board's open to Zoom because I've been requesting that for a couple of years. So I really want to say thank you for that and that the board's willing to work on that. If we could get the public comment in, that would be really a bonus, even if it was just at both meetings, if they weren't willing to do it throughout the agenda, because that might make the meetings go too long or something. So appreciate the movement on, on those things. Thank you.
I'd like to say a couple of things.
Tim, can you just turn around and reach that associate? Thank you. Thank you.
So I am not very tech savvy. I'll be the first to admit it. I'm not ashamed of it, but I was able to find the fair website very easily and right on there, it shows your guys' calendar and it shows your next fair board meeting being December 8th. So to me, that looks very easily found. I can click on there and make reservations for the campground and all that. So I just want to bring that up because I do think that is fairly simple. Something I would like to let all the fair board members know is, is in the last couple of weeks, I became your liaison officer. So what that briefly means is that I'm kind of like your information pipeline between the fair board and the Board of County Commissioners. So if anyone would like to reach out to me at any time regarding anything, please feel free to. That doesn't mean that you're not limited to talk to all three of us, as mentioned before, but I thought it'd be appropriate for everybody to have that information.
So Ron, you did notice that today's meeting's not on there, no?
I didn't see it, no. But it is noticed through, through the county, but no, it's not noticed for their meeting with us.
But if you go to the other part of their website, it is listed there.
It's listed, but not in the same way. And that's what the, there's an inconsistency of where do you go for the meeting is what the community comment is. Because Mark did post this on their website. It's just not like when you go onto the county webs, so Mark put his hand down, so I cleared him for that. They're like, when you go on the county website, there's a calendar and it's just meetings and it tells you what the meetings are. This meeting is on the face sheet and then you go a little bit farther, or the next meeting is on their, your face page, the front face of your page, and then you dig a little deeper. And so if there, that's where there's an opportunity to consider, where do you archive 2024 minutes, 2025 minutes? And then like decisions, resolutions, that might be something that you might consider addressing because it will also limit how much people need to come and say, I need a public records request to see what you guys did last time because you freely put it on your website. And so that can also garner the public trust and support when it's not feeling like I have to dig for so much stuff from the fair board, especially even like the, this is hard to find. I know it got published, but it was, that's when I saw you, I was like, did you have that with you? It might be ease of use might help with support, but.
So I'd like to say again that other than this meeting today, all of their meeting minutes are posted on their website in PDF form, all of their agendas dating back to January, January 2025. So it looks like I can find everything for a calendar year very simply, I mean, without, without working hard. I don't know where other past minutes may be for 24 or 23. I don't know where those are at. They may be here.
There'd be a little of.
A little of pictures.
Oh, there they are. So I mean, to me, that's pretty simple. So I would commend you guys on that or commend Mark or whoever's doing it, but it looks like the information is readily there, other than today's meeting.
Yeah, I think it's probably more for me at least from what I've heard with comment, the timeliness of the publishing of the meeting minutes.
Yeah, that's, that's true. But you know, when I go, when I go to the county website, I can't get around it. I'm sorry. I just, I can't use it. And to try and find out how to even hook up, to find a meeting, to listen to the meeting or something, it's a lot harder to use than the fair's website. It's all relative. And I know you have a lot more to put on here too, so.
Yep, there are, we, there are challenges, no matter what the entity and format, and we get feedback too. I do acknowledge that. Tim, based on what you've said and the head nods I've seen, would you anticipate starting the conversation on the agenda for the December 8th meeting about the board adopting policies going forward? Is that something you would anticipate? Do we look for that? That would be great.
Yeah, I totally, I, I think that's a great idea. Policies, SOPs, whatever we need. And like you say, it'd make it much, much easier to track. We may even have some of that stuff already instituted that we just don't call the same thing.
Right. And finding it in one location, yeah, one location where it's all.
Exactly.
Documented would be, and I would, if you would add it to the November 8th agenda for your next meeting, I would highly recommend you contact Robert Abel, your legal counsel from the county, and see if he can be available to help with that conversation.
Okay. We can, we can do that.
Thank you. Could you hand the mic to Jennifer?
Jennifer Wyman, and this might actually be better addressed with our meeting with Robert, but I just was trying to figure out in attending the last three meetings and as the bookkeeper, you do have a treasurer. However, my level of involvement in the financials is going to be a very deeper dive and understanding and trying to explain that to a treasurer and expect her to be the one to report the information at a meeting. Is it something that is, would be acceptable or normal for like a bookkeeper, for the bookkeeper to present rather than a treasurer, like in this situation when it's contracted? I'm trying to figure out how and what the best platform is for me to be able to share information at a board meeting, but not have it be so specific or like that can also be taken out of that context, any actions that needed or motions that might come from the board wanting to move forward with something that I'm sharing. I'm just trying to look for guidance on that because.
That's up to the board, the fair board itself, but there's nothing that prevents the fair board from having an action discussion decision item that goes over a budget topic and then you identify, I need a vote on this. There's nothing that prevents that board from putting you on the agenda, but that's, that's not our, that's a suggestion, but that would be up to them to decide.
I think what I personally run into when I run the meeting is if something isn't on the agenda, even if it looks like that'd be really great to talk about or to try and figure, if it's not on the, on the agenda, then we can't really talk about it. So we could, now we have to wait until the next meeting to agendize it and.
But you could have a discussion standing item that has bookkeeper current financials update, and then if she needed an action item that she tell you, this is an action item for the next agenda or whatever your special meeting is. But what I'm hearing her say is she wants to explain where things are that's easier to not play telephone with to the treasurer to explain. And so if you just gave her a standing item on your agenda, she could explain it and it's just discussion. And then if you needed to vote on something, then you add that in ahead of time.
Yeah, that's absolutely, we're still getting our feet wet on this separation of, of the treasurer and the bookkeeper. You know, I just assumed that that's a treasurer's job is to do a treasurer's report.
Here's the technical thing, is the fair isn't, is required for the treasurer, the bookkeeper was a contract. And so there's a little bit of difference between when we originally did it, I think it was like two years ago now, it was, we used the statute that said treasurer. Technically, you gave yourself a treasurer and a contract for the bookkeeper. So Robert's going to have to reconcile those two things because your treasurer is doing something different than really what the treasurer in the statute was. So we might have to reference, because I asked that same question of, I understand why to split the two out and what we did, but the payment to the contractor was, that's what, we use the, the title of treasurer for that reason. But Robert can help you guys identify how to do your agenda so that you're extracting that. And I think that will help community support to regularly hear how you're improving the budget. If it's a standing meeting that allows for her to report out, because everyone will leave this meeting wanting to know, well, what was her findings? Has that been, you know, solved?
That's no problem. That'd be no problem.
Yeah, I think it's great for you guys to choose to have both on your agenda as regular items. If there's nothing, nothing new that needs to be discussed, you just move on to the next agenda item. But I know our board, we always look to have subject matter experts in our meetings whenever we can so that we can get that detailed information if we have questions. So that's been our general approach.
And I'll say it in a slightly, it's a positive-ish, but the responsibility of the bookkeeper role on the bookkeeper instead of taking that liability on as fair board because that's what you're paying her for. So you use her to be responsible for what she's reporting to you and you treat her like the contractor of you equally will have questions of her instead of trying to do it differently.
That makes sense.
That way we can say it's all Jennifer's.
Yeah, because it'd be very frustrating for Stacy to ask her questions.
Yeah.
So we're coming up on the end of our scheduled time. We did have on the agenda, if it was needed, an executive session in case we have anything personnel and records exempt to address. Does any board member have any such items that they would like to go into executive session for?
I would move to go into Idaho Code 742061 subsection B Personnel and I'm going to say D Records exempt, but with the Board of Commissioners only, no fair board members.
I'll second for further deliberation.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
Should we stick around for a next decision?
No, there's no decision, just discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Do we have any more deliberation on this item?
Not many at this time.
We'll call both, please.
Make sure you email me so I can forward you that stuff, okay?
Question on me?
Yes.
Feel free to text me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
I do, yeah. Yes.
Motion passes. We are moving into executive session. Thank you.